Participated in the program. We thank you for your time and hope you found it informative. We would be remiss if we did not thank the following people who made the Long Branch Citizen Police Academy possible. Mayor John Pallone and the City Council members. Brookdale Community College Susan Early, Mr. Johnson, and Ms. Jenna. Chief Roebuck. Our Sergeant John Evangelou. Captain Rizzuto and Captain George Silverio. We'd also like to thank our guest speakers. Sergeant Shamrock. Officer Akell. His partner K-9 Hades. Detective Simonelli. The Long Branch Fire Department. Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office Karen Lavanna. Donna Onsiago. Ms. Lisa Lee from Easy Ride. 180 Turning Lives Around Jennifer Carassia. Mr. Walter O'Neil. Luciana Silva from B.R. Center. Reverend Sandra Gonzalez and the Long Branch Citizen Police Academy alumni. Thank you so much for your time. We would like to present the following certificates to Ms. Barbara Brzezinski.[90.11][90.11](APPLAUSE). Yeah, the couple of names. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Ms. Elizabeth Rotacco.[102.11][102.11](APPLAUSE).
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Barbara Louis White.[107.42][107.42](APPLAUSE). Mr. Nick Fornaroto.[126.81][126.81](APPLAUSE). Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chuck Miller.[133.16][133.16](APPLAUSE). Ms. Sonia Concalvez.[141.16][141.16](APPLAUSE). Joa Guires.[166.16][166.16](APPLAUSE). Thank you so much. Thank you, Celia.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Anna Lara.[187.16][187.16](APPLAUSE). Ms. Karen Hoy.[194.45][194.45](APPLAUSE). Ms. Priscilla Godino.[201.16][201.16](APPLAUSE). Ms. Merrick Cruz Flores.[209.48][209.48](APPLAUSE). I think that's it. Okay. And then the other... So, thank you, everybody. Thank you so much.[222.16][222.16](APPLAUSE).
Have a good job.
Thank you.
Good job, any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. (INAUDIBLE). Okay. Okay. So, give us just a minute. And let me call up the President of Brookdale. You could give me those? Good. Thank you. Give you one of them. And then I also want to call up all of the people who have been involved with the immigrant experience. So, I want the people from Brookdale. I want the Planning Committee. And I want the people who participated. Oh, so good to see you all. Come on up over here. Yay, Anna![302.31][302.31](LAUGHING). Great. Good. Look at this. Great. This is Long Branch and Brookdale coming together. That's what you're seeing right now.[316.13][316.13](APPLAUSE). So, wow, look at this. So, let me... So, let me just take a minute just to set the scene. You know, you start a work project and you don't know the impact that you're going to have with it. And that's what happened with this program that we're going to talk a little bit about, and it's called the Immigrant Experience. So, give me a minute just to set the scene. So, Brookdale has an international... Yay! Brookdale has an International Education Center that is under the leadership of Dr. Janice Thomas. Where's Janice? There we go.[365.13][365.13](APPLAUSE). And part... One of the programs that they have... Oh, first of all, let me tell you. Listen to what the mission is for the International Education Center. This is spectacular. Their mission is to make the world a better place. Make the world a better place through education and by creating opportunities to make positive change in communities. You're going to see how that exact thing happened here tonight. So, they have... Through the International Center, they have a program that they call the Global Read Program. And it's something that we do at Brookdale where we select a book and then we have everybody who's going to participate read that same book. And we talk about it in classes and we talk about it at different events. So, this year, the topic that they selected was the immigrant experience, which of course speaks directly to Long Branch. And there are two firsts with the program this year. First of all, not only did they read the book, but they wrote the book. And this is the book that they wrote. It's called Pointed Towards the Sun, and it's a collection of writings and stories from Brookdale students, from Brookdale faculty, from different people in the community about what their experience is as an immigrant in America. The second first... If you can have a second first. All of our English people, if we can have a second first, is this is the first global read experience that we've had in Long Branch. And when we ran the program, we had over 80 people fill the room in the Long Branch Center. It was filled to the brim of Brookdale and Long Branch people who wanted to come and hear about what it's like, what the immigrant experience is like in Long Branch. So, why is it important? Why are we doing this tonight? Someone give me a guess. What is the proportion of people out of our whole population, out of all the people who live in Long Branch? What's the proportion of people who are Hispanic or Latino?
(INAUDIBLE) 80.
Oh, all over the place. Yeah? Is that...
No. I'm going to say 80.
Okay. Well, actually, Hispanic and Latino, it's 31 percent. And the most rapidly growing part of our... Of any community, the Latino population, add to that the Brazilians, the Portuguese, the Italian, the Haitians, the Asians. We truly, just like our nation, we truly are such a community of immigrants. And that's why it's so important for us to come together, to understand each other, and to learn how to work together. Brookdale alone, we have over 200 people who are enrolled in our GED and education programs with a mile-long waiting list because we can't offer enough classes. So, it's our diversity, all of us, and all of us in the room, I believe, feel it's our diversity makes us beautiful. It makes us strong, and it needs to be celebrated. And that's what the immigrant experience is all about. And that's what we're going to celebrate tonight. So, let me... Two quick things. One to the creators of the immigrant experience, our Brookdale people. Just raise your hands.[594.16][594.16](APPLAUSE). These are the people who had the idea, and I suspect who never in their wildest dreams thought that the impact that they would have is a citywide action like this where we're all coming together to support this and probably most important, to carry on the conversation. We are indebted to you. We thank you so much for that.[630.38][630.38](APPLAUSE). And to our participants, what you're going to hear... You thought it was all going to end the other day. To our participants, what you're going to hear from a proclamation and from the certificates that you're going to be receiving. You are officially global citizen ambassadors from this point forward to carry forward this important message and to keep the conversation going. So, we can continue to do, just like the International Center said, so we can continue to make change to improve the... Some of the challenges for our immigrant population make Long Branch as strong as it can be. Yay! Let's start the celebration. I want to start it off by asking our President, Dr. Stout, if he would read the proclamation.
Sure. Would you like me to read it from the mic?
Oh, absolutely.
It's up to you. I can shout.[698.13][698.13](LAUGHING). Whereas the Global Citizen Project at Brookdale Community College works to make the world a better place through education and by providing opportunities to effect positive change in our local communities. And whereas the Global Read Project, one of the major programs focusing this year, focused this year on the immigrant experience, which provided an opportunity to increase awareness of the challenges faced by our immigrant communities and the interconnectedness of all people across the globe as documented in the book they published, Pointed Toward the Sun. And whereas this year, the first session of the Global Read ever offered in Long Branch entitled "From Authors to Leaders Supporting Immigrant Communities" was cosponsored by the Brookdale International Education Center and the City of Long Branch, which is one of the most diverse cities in Monmouth County and the most diverse of Brookdale's multiple sites throughout the county. And whereas we are all joined together in the values of hard work and shared opportunity that define us as a nation of immigrants, native-born, and immigrants regardless of race, gender, creed, or country of origin, and recognize that we are stronger when we work together in a welcoming spirit to embrace the diverse perspectives, cultures, talents, and contributions so valuable to our quality of life and economy. Now, therefore, I as Mayor of Long Branch and I as President of Brookdale Community College do hereby proclaim the creators and participants of the Global Read immigrant experience as global citizen ambassadors in fostering positive change in our communities. And we call upon everyone to join these efforts to promote a stronger Long Branch and more welcoming and vibrant culture in Monmouth County that creates greater opportunities for everyone as members and leaders of the community and of the world. Signed, John Pallone, Mayor of City of Long Branch, and David Stout, President of Brookdale Community College.[812.26][812.26](APPLAUSE).
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Stout. Now for the individual certificates. And these certificates are global citizen ambassador certificates, and it says, "The City of Long Branch and Brookdale Community College present this award to the people that we're going to be presenting it to for promoting change, to make the world a better place for everyone as members and leaders of Long Branch." And it's signed by the mayor and it's signed by the President of Brookdale. And so, to start things off, this is the way we're going to run it. This is a Brookdale tradition. I'm going to call the names. You come up for your certificates. And this is what we call the Grip and Grin. You grip and you grin for the picture.[872.13][872.13](LAUGHING). And then, just to go back because we want to have a group picture of everybody when we're all done. So, to start it off, let me start off with the person who put this whole thing together and really was in charge of so much of it, and that's Dr. Janice Thomas, who is the Director for the International...[892.13][892.13](APPLAUSE). And Janice, I want you to have a copy of the proclamation also.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, there you go. You got it. Okay, good. Yeah? A little grip and grin.
Grip and grin.
Here you go.[914.13][914.13](LAUGHING). With the mayor. Okay, good. You got it. Okay. Next person. This person is primarily in charge of the Global Read Program, joined by several other members of the English Department. But let me introduce Kelsey Maki. There you go.
Thank you.
I got two there. Okay. Hi, Kelsey. Great. And Debbie, is Debbie here? Two other people, Debbie Muir and Donna Pope.[959.23][959.23](APPLAUSE). So, those are two other faculty members that were involved in this. And great. Good, Kelsey. Thank you. And also Ashley.
Congratulations.
There you go. Okay, great. So, this is really the collaborative work of Long Branch and from Brookdale. And so, I want to introduce to you people who were on the Planning Committee. Some of these names you know because they are really the leaders and shakers of our wonderful community. So, first and first, Luciana Silva.[992.23][992.23](APPLAUSE). And you all know Luciana as the head of the Brazilian Help Center. Second person who you know very well also, Tanya Garcia. Tanya Garcia is the Director of the Library.[1018.13][1018.13](APPLAUSE). There we go. We got this down pat now, right? Another person. These two are really partners in crime. Tanya and the social worker for the library, David Perez.[1040.13][1040.13](APPLAUSE). Next person is Head of the Latino-American Association, and that is Violetta Peters. I love that name.[1065.51][1065.51](APPLAUSE). Oh, okay.
I was supposed to say shake and grin.
Yeah, grip and grin. Grip and grin.[1075.13][1075.13](LAUGHING). Vi is also on the Board of Education, too. Wonderful. Thank you. Is Vigilio here? Okay, I don't think so. Vigilio Lorenzo was also on the Planning Committee. And Cecilia Rodriguez from our Brookdale Center was also on the Planning Committee, but they couldn't make it tonight. So, some of our participants from a student perspective. Barbara? Barbara make it tonight? Okay, we'll have to... We'll get the certificates to all of these folks. Ingrid Mendez? Barbara Rodriguez? No. Anjuana? Ah, come on up.[1124.13][1124.13](APPLAUSE). Here you go, John. These are members of our ESL and GED programs. Wonderful.
Can you please scoot up the rest of them?
Sure.
I stole these from Professor Rosenberg tonight. Come on up. Everybody fits in Rosenberg's class.[1150.13][1150.13](APPLAUSE). And they are coming here. Excuse me.
These are all students down at Brookdale Community College's ESL classes in the evening. And they are here... They're having a civics lesson. And they are here because this is the only place that they get free English classes. They're trying to improve their lives through English classes at Brookdale so that they can go into the credit courses. My name is Rebecca, and I'm from Literacy Volunteers. And we are also at Brookdale Community College as a guest. And these are wonderful students who have worked two jobs, many hours, and they are here tonight. And can they say anything?
Sure.
Okay. Do you want to say a few words?
Hello, my name is Edwin Martinez. And yeah, we need to keep the school open because we depend... We need to learn English, and we come every day. And we work through the day. And the only time we got is at night. So, that's why we need to keep the school open.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you.[1216.13][1216.13](APPLAUSE).
Wonderful. Great. Thank you so much. Talk about your own surprises for the program. Thank you so much. Great. Good. And now, Ilsa? Is Ilsa? Okay. Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Lorena? Where is... Here we go. Captain Silverio. Wonderful.[1243.21][1243.21](APPLAUSE). Yay! You know, when a city can talk about the collaboration that we have with the police department, you just have to consider yourselves one of the luckiest cities around. And it's gentlemen like our captain and Corporal Lansing, who I'm going to introduce in a second. The support from the chief, it's priceless. It's what makes all of this stuff work. So, our thanks.[1288.13][1288.13](APPLAUSE). Corporal Lansing. Here we go. Thank you so much.[1303.13][1303.13](APPLAUSE). Okay. Collaboration takes one more unique little turn, and that is this little darling who just turned herself around.[1323.45][1323.45](LAUGHING). Anna. Yay![1327.76][1327.76](APPLAUSE). What a great job. This little Anna, when we called for volunteers, because what we did with little skits to kind of show... Bring to life what the immigrant experience is, and you had a real tough one because this was a medical situation where Anna was put in the position of going to a doctor's office with her grandmother, who was... Who we remember was Nancy Kegelman from Brookdale. And what happens so much for kids, right, is, you know, they know the language, and so they become the translator. And Anna was put in the situation of having to tell her well-beloved grandmother that she had terminal cancer and that she was going to be dying, you know? And, you know, it really just caught the whole audience, just that scenario. But to think that that's what our kids go through, that's... Those are the kinds of situations that our kids are put in. And you were terrific. So, here you go. There's your certificate.[1406.66][1406.66](APPLAUSE). Yep, here's your other one with the right spelling. Okay? There we go. Okay. Now, wait a minute. A picture with the mayor and the President of Brookdale?
Turn it this way?
There we go.
There you go.
There you go.
Oh, come out. Oh, we have to move.
Oh.
There you go. Okay. Congratulations.[1432.13][1432.13](APPLAUSE).
So, you know, not only are we so pleased with the program, but we're so pleased that it's going to continue, that the important conversation is going to continue. And I think that's what we're most indebted to. So, thank you all.[1455.13][1455.13](APPLAUSE).
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Stain.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. There are no consideration of ordinances. Ordinances for introduction. This is the first reading of Order 7-19 entitled "An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Article III, Chapter 256 of the Code of the City of Long Branch, Headling and Soliciting Added the Creation of a No-Knock Registry." I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for May 22nd, 2019.
So moved. Second.
Second. Roll call. Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. At this time, we will have public participation for resolutions and all general comments. I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Post? If anyone in the audience has any comments to make, please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Good evening, Mayor Pallone and council members. My name is Anita Claybering, and I live on 161 Garrett Drive. First of all, I would like to have you announce that the City of Long Branch Motion Center for Independent Living and the Long Branch Disability Caucus is inviting everyone to a grand opening of the four-way accessible beach in Long Branch on Saturday, June 8th, at the North Bath Avenue Beach on the boardwalk from 10:20 a.m. to 12:00 noon, which will include a women's cunning for a four-way accessible ramp at around 10:00 a.m. There will be a picnic afterward. I would like to thank Mayor Pallone and motions for making all this possible. Secondly, I would like to thank Mayor Pallone for his work on the proclamation of June the 7th as National Guard Awareness Day at the next council meeting on May 22nd. Representatives of Monmouth County Action will be along with me to oversee the proclamation, in which I am very grateful to Mayor Pallone for his quick action and support. Mayor Pallone's action on the two issues I address makes him a true official for the people, and we are truly proud to him for our mayor. Thank you all very much.[1698.13][1698.13](APPLAUSE).
Vincent Laporte, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Mr. Morton, the user-friendly budget, is it available yet?
No, not yet. It'll be available for adoption.
Thank you. Tonight's resolution, 90-19, the adoption of the fiscal year 2019 Action Plan and Work Plan, allocation and budget for administration of the Community Development Block Grant Program. A couple of sentences in this that I want to read for the public record. There are areas within the city that appear to be protected from unwanted ethnic group residency, but a legal challenge could negate this sublime effort to discriminate. Slowly, such areas are being populated by other ethnic groups, but it appears preference is usually given to a preferred-type citizen. There are also density controls in specific... areas. However, the governing body is allowing greater density in new construction projects to positively affect the settlement of mixed social and economic groups, as well as allowing a greater range of profitability for would-be investors. It continues. Barriers to affordable housing are never easy to completely remove within a municipality, as there will always be a lack of financing to some degree and a lack of prime real estate that is made available. Then it goes on ad nauseam with other statements. The hypocrisy of this resolution is, if this is an action plan, this city has been in full-blown discrimination ethnically, culturally, and economically since 2005. As far as prime real estate, they knock people out of their houses by condemnation eminent domain. This resolution, the action plan, is a joke. It's been a joke since 2005 and continues to be. And what further aggravates this 90-19 resolution is Team Pallone's approval of a new 30-year tax abatement for Kushner on Broadway, which furthers the divide in this city between its citizens and out-of-town residents being accommodated by Kushner developers. This is junk government. Under the workshop session sheet, the contract negotiations and executive sections, Chandler Maps, on that topic, the residents get free parking for the summer there, as announced by the city. Gee whiz, that's a deal. The residents of this city were burdened with taking this property for approximately $4 million as a land banking measure for Kushner companies, while at the same time for Kushner, the city lost the tax ratables on that Chandler Maps property by taking ownership of it. And now, after being burned by the city with the purchase of the Chandler Maps property, that includes Pallone and Selly with the Schneider team, after being burned, now the residents get free parking? That's a cruel, sickening joke. Continuing on with Chandler Maps, we are well aware of the talks that Mayor Pallone and Councilman Viera had with Long Branch partners concerning the Broadway development. Those talks were to accommodate the special interests that financed the Pallone campaign.
Mr. Laporte, one minute.
We are also familiar with the preferred talks of having steel over wood to accommodate the special interests. We are also well aware of what's taking place for the accommodation of the Chandler Maps property to satisfy the special interests of Team Pallone. Wherever you're going, Team Pallone, we're not only on you, we're ahead of you. In the executive session on the mission statement, Pallone team is looking to figure out what their mission statement is. In conclusion, I'd like to inform Team Pallone, their mission statement should be not to lie, like lying on a new 30-year tax abatement for Kushner development on Broadway.
My name is Louis Senna. I live on Highland Avenue in El Braun section of Long Branch. Recently, my neighbor got in the mail to fix the sidewalks, from the city, I guess, 30 days to fix the sidewalks. And I'm wondering where this is coming from, because it seems to be spotted. It's like some people are getting this notice, some people are not. Not anybody's doing it, though, but I just want to know, is this something that the board wants done? Now, I don't know how you can just tell one person or a couple people.
You know, I'm sorry, sir. Could you repeat it? You're saying sidewalks of summer being fixed?
There's a summons, not a summons, whoever enforces the codes says the sidewalk had to be fixed. Now, the sidewalk is no better or worse than anybody else in the El Braun section. And there's, they said he got a certified letter. I did not see it. But I was just wondering why, is this something the town is pushing, that everybody's got to fix their sidewalks one by one or something? Doesn't seem to be...
I don't know the specifics about this case. I can't comment.
Well, are you enforcing a code for the sidewalks lately?
There is an ordinance in place with the city that property owners are responsible for the care and upkeep of the sidewalk in front of their residence or their business property. So, I don't know if this particular case was spurred by a complaint from a neighbor, if it was someone's observation. I don't know the background about it.
All right, how can I get the information I need?
If you have the information or can bring it forward, that would be helpful. I will tell you that we are, you know, enforcing code as, you know, at a request of what we talked about, you know, during the campaign, as well as from residents throughout the city. So, we're trying to clean up the city, we're trying to straighten things out and, you know, make improvements throughout. I mean, that's for sure. But in terms of the particular case, if you could let us know, we could look into it.
Well, he said, I'm getting this secondhand. I don't like to bring that up secondhand, but he said it's starting on Woodgate Avenue. But I see nobody else doing it. So...
Mayor, if I could just chime in for a second, and this is not definitive information, but actually, it was a Facebook posting that was brought to our attention about sidewalks needing repair. And so, we just started to look into it further. And the extent of what I can tell you, because I don't know what has followed up with it, is if it was an issue that our residents were bringing forward, we were going to look into it. But like the mayor is saying, specific cases or where it's going right now, or the priorities of it, I certainly can't speak to it. But if I put it in the best light, it was an issue that was brought forward to us and we're in the process of looking into it. I don't know if that satisfies...
No, if I find out more information about this, I wanted to know if this was something the council had brought up and was, you know, pushing.
Yeah.
Or was just, I don't know. It was very strange when I heard it. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to add that the council is committed to enforcing code, so...
Yeah, but there's a lot of codes. I mean, there's a lot of people with sidewalks, having everybody in town.
Right, yeah. But if you, like, as the mayor said, if you can let us know specifically where, and we can look into it further.
Sure.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Council. I'm Michael Shiavo from the Pedler in Long Branch on Ocean Boulevard. I have, one of my neighbors is, I don't know if you've driven by, is putting these pilings in the ground, and it's moving my basement wall. And I have pictures, I showed the building code. We did a stop-work permit, and they're going to start again tomorrow. And I hadn't seen any, most of the time when they do things 10 feet off your wall, you would think you'd get some type of paperwork that would say somebody's going to build so-and-so close, which wouldn't have really bothered me. But it seems like the pilings are like 20 feet tall, and even though they're reaming them into the, honing them into the ground, it seems like a helix pier would be better, being so close to the wall. So, I was told maybe I should come here and put it on record, and I don't know if you want to see the pictures.
Please.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Shiavos, if you wouldn't mind staying till the end of the meeting, we can get some greater detail and find out about it.
I have each section kind of numbered where the cracks are going. And they put in these, like, sensors to see if it's going to move anymore. But I thought they were going to have a better course of action for moving forward than that.
Slightly, yes. There was, in fact, a stop-work order, and that was rescinded. And I can tell you, I can read you a quote from our construction official, that there were documents submitted, there's going to be seismic monitoring of the site during the remainder of the pile driving process, and I'll quote, "And have your structural engineer continue to monitor the crack gauges installed on your business."
Yeah.
Apparently, there's seismic monitoring going on to monitor the vibration in response to your complaint.
Okay.
And with those measures in place, the work is being allowed to resume.
Okay.
And that was on Friday, May 3rd.
Yeah, he was actually there the other day, putting the little bubble levels and...
What's going up there? I did notice them on my way to work. I saw...
So, there's a two-family house that's getting put on a 50 by 100, which probably isn't a 50 anymore because the sidewalk got put in a long time ago. So, I was a little surprised to find that not only one house is going, but a two-family house is going. But I think if you make provisions for parking, I think it's pretty lenient on what you can or can't do.
I don't want to put him on the spot, but I'm going to. Our city engineer is here, Dave Zella. Perhaps you could comment, Dave, on this type of situation?
The situation as it's prior, putting in a lot of areas of the way that people would do this, I don't know the backstory or why it wasn't going to begin with, but it's the appropriate approach.
Okay.
I'm like, we can take a walk in the hall and get your pictures if there's...
Okay.
...anywhere.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, Patty Veraki, 246 Jerome Avenue, Oakhurst. And I just wanted to bring up briefly again the Taconacy, Taconacy Public Access and Taconacy Lake issue. Stan had mentioned at the last council meeting, or maybe it was the one prior, about the signage that was going to go up. And again, I did take a look at quite a few of the public access spots and did see that the signage is desperately in need with Memorial Day approaching. I was also a little bit surprised to see on the city website where the city beaches map was, that it showed, you know, what beaches had the lifeguards, which beach had the handicapped accessibility, which ones had the defibrillators and so on. So, it was very specific which beaches had what. But I did not see any of the public accesses on that map, which I think in the past I've remembered seeing them. So, I was wondering for about that. And the other question I had, who was actually in charge of checking the water level and the fish ladder and the status of the dam and the outfall?
Stan, you have the answer to that?
Lieutenant Shiroli is working the suitcase project. FEMA came in and did some of the work in there, which he's working on. The rest is the contract developer for that project.
Okay.
As far as the fish ladder, once that is corrected, turn over to us and we have the responsibility of checking the whole board after those are scored.
Okay. I did talk to quite a few people at the Fish and Wildlife and NJDEP and CAFRA, and apparently, they all agree that the fish ladder is not working. And they, it's questionable, it seems like, who really is in charge of, you know. I got the documents to look to see what the plans were in place when it was first given the permits. And I was really surprised with one aspect was, and unfortunately, my printer didn't print all five pages, but I believe it's on page 30 to 35 in the documents concerning the Taconacy agreements, that it's dated May 30th, 2014, and I do have that page. And at the bottom of that five page, it said that this agreement and these specifics would be, if they were not finished in five years, or if the construction was not finished within that time period, that they would be null and void, is the way I understood it. So, this month, May 30th, is that deadline. So, I'm very concerned about that.
So, Patty, if you have that information, I could certainly give it to Mr. Renon, and he could look into it.
Okay. The other question, when I went to the Taconacy, and I have pictures to update everyone on what that looks like at this point, were the five spaces for parking, they were always supposed to be there even through construction, and there is no spot for the parking, as I can see now. And lastly, concerning the Taconacy, there was drainage problems with the Admiralty the last time, a year ago or something. Stan might remember that, what that was about. Kevin Hayes had mentioned to me that they were draining their parking lot the wrong way, and it was going into that access area. And it so happened that I found that that situation still exists. So, that might need to be looked at. But that's what I'm concerned, like, if these things can not be corrected, or who's watching this? I mean, there's been no fish spawning, that's absolutely, positively, since 2011. And these are endangered species. This is, you know, not just a body of water we're talking about, but the availability of an endangered species to reproduce.
So, Patty, we'll look into it. I'll try to have an answer for you next, by the next meeting. And if there's any questions, I'll call you, I'll have somebody reach out to you.
Okay.
As far as the signage, you know, I've been in contact with Mr. Zubas, and Stan jumped in. The signs have been written, the public access, they've gone out to get some quotes. And he's confident, Stan, that they'll be produced and put in place, as we indicated, by Memorial Day.
Okay, thank you.
Am I right, Stan?
Thank you, Patty. Is there anyone else?
Yes, me. Ernest Magnoli, born at 301 Second Avenue and now live in Asbury Park. I always feel like when I come here, it reminds me of my growing up in Long Branch. There always seemed to have been a lot of great things going on, especially the ocean, the sunshine, family life, religion, and school. But then there always seemed to be the other side, corruption, violence, drugs, perversion, sex, all kinds of horrible things. And so, I was just wondering if this council is aware of the FBI reporting system for New Jersey, which is all, just reported crime, by the way, all crime, FBI tracks, especially violent crime, and then it's input with local police departments. And of course, they have to do per capita, they have to adjust it, because you really can't compare, you know, Long Branch to a tiny municipality. But anyway, there's 21 counties in the state, and there's 565 municipalities, and there's about 650 school districts. So, if you focus on the crime aspect and the current data, and you track it over the last 10 years, the only two cities in Monmouth County are Long Branch and Asbury. the only two cities in Monmouth County are Long Branch and Asbury. And Long Branch and Asbury, to my knowledge, 70 years, have never gotten out of the top 25. Asbury hovers around one per capita, around one, right now it's two. I think Camden's number one, Asbury's number two. Now, I always look at it like the sister communities, Neptune, Asbury, and Long Branch. Because as we all grew up, and even as today, those three big communities, two cities and one big Neptune, kind of like have a lot of people, a lot of geography, et cetera. But, to the surprise of everyone, you have Asbury, of 565 municipalities, ranked the second most violent, dangerous. You have Neptune ranked number 15, and you have Long Branch ranked number 25. And Eaton Town is number 30. I thought I just credited Eaton Town. So, the idea is, one of the things that people who study this and who investigate it, who report on it, who write about it, people like myself, tend to be a little bit active. We like to look at things other than just say, "Well, it's this group's fault", or "It's that neighborhood's fault". Let's start to look at the government, and let's start to look at law enforcement, and let's start to look at judicial, and let's look at other things like religious services and teachers, et cetera. And when you put the package together, you can't just say, "Well, it's criminals' fault", because if you look in those areas that I just named, per capita, there's a lot of criminals there. I mean, if somebody is interested in crime by police, well, you could enjoy the paper every day. It just doesn't seem to stop. I mean, sex crimes, stealing, violent crimes, corruption, abuse, et cetera. Drunkenness, killing people with cars, drugs, you know, et cetera. And, you know, I'm talking about Long Branch, Asbury, and Neptune, because they're like the crescendic communities that, I mean, who's, what do they say? Who's watching the police? Who's watching the court? Who's watching the government? Because if you really are born here and live here a long time, there's a lot of crime. Not to mention, you know, today we hear about families that are known to Long Branch. Well, you know, they're involved in financial crimes, and securities crimes, and tax fraud, and mayors getting arrested, and put in jail, and city managers, and lawsuits flying everywhere. I'm almost done. So, maybe we could do something about that, have a committee, or a citizens' review board, or hire an ombudsman, don't pay them any money. But let's get a look at all this stuff. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Patty, can we have this? Can we keep this?
I need a motion to close the public participation portion of the meeting.
I'll move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda.
Submove. Second.
Roll call. Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Sally?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the listed applications. Approval of Annabelle Gomez, who's an active member in the Branchport Firehouse, and approval of the lease of taxi medallion number 51 to Christian Davenport.
Submove. Second.
Roll call. Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Sally? Dr. Sally?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes.
At this time, I'd like to ask Councilman Dangler, do you have anything to say this evening?
No, I just would, well, yes, I would just want to wish everyone a Happy Mother's Day, and enjoy the time with your family.
Councilman Viera?
Yes, good evening. I'd like to congratulate the citizen police. What a great job, Kim. You always do a great job, Lieutenant Levy. It's wonderful. It's wonderful to see the vibe in this room. It's beautiful, and that's what we're here for. And I'd also like to congratulate my folk over here for Immigrant and Brookdale Community. They did a beautiful job bringing the students. It's beautiful to have that with us also. And to Mr. McNoly, I still live in Long Branch. I came when I was very young, and I think Long Branch is a very good place to live, too.
So do I.
And it's very, and we're doing a lot, we're doing everything we can to keep it. So, I think everybody up here is trying very hard. And there's a lot of things that we can't control. We try, but we can't. And tonight, I'll leave it, and good evening, and thanks for coming.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vogt?
So, I'm going to pick up on two things that Councilman Viera said. First of all, the citizens' police academy, and also the immigrant experience. And this is how, really, our commitment to continue this important conversation about how we unite together as one community. All of our immigrant communities form one stronger Long Branch. And in doing that, I actually want to say kudos to the alumni group of the Police Citizens Academy, because they've exemplified the kind of work, the kind of conversations that we want to see continue. For those of you that were fortunate enough last Sunday to attend, I think it was the second meeting of the community conversations for this year, second one for this year. It was held at a Spanish-speaking church. And it was bringing the police together, specifically with the immigrant population, to go through a number of different scenarios to help explain what are the best, what's the best way to interact? Just as an example, you know, if you're stopped by the police for possibly a speeding ticket, should you get out of the car? Should you stay in the car? Should you, what should you do? The event was scheduled for an hour and a half. It could have easily gone on for two more hours. The participation was wonderful, the turnout was wonderful, which just speaks to the importance of all of us reaching out together on every level. So, kudos to the, this was done by the alumni group of the Police Academy. You set an example of the kind of way we want to continue this important conversation. So, our thanks to you. And Happy Mother's Day.
Councilwoman Sally?
I just have two things tonight. One is to congratulate the graduates of the Citizen Police Academy, something we're very, very proud of. You and Lance have done a good job, Kim, and thanks for making us look good. And also, I'm very proud to be a mother. But for everybody who is a mother or a caregiver who acts as a mother, I wish you a Happy Mother's Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Plon?
So, I'd like to thank everybody, as always, for coming this evening. I'd like to wish all the mothers a Happy Mother's Day. Congratulations to the Police Academy, the citizens, the graduates, for all your assistance at Brookdale College. Anita, thank you for putting the immigrant experience together. That was a wonderful presentation. And I just have a few, I'd like to mention a few upcoming events here in the city. So, as Anita pointed out, there's a, the fully accessible beach in Long Branch will be available at the North Avenue Beach entrance, starting in the beginning of June. Anita mentioned there will be a small ribbon cutting on June 8th, from 10:30 to 12 at that location. Everybody is welcome to attend. And we look forward to having our first permanent, fully accessible beach here in Long Branch, one of the few, if not the only, in the state. Another note, the Long Branch Mayor's Office and the Recreation Department are excited to announce the Neighborhood Fun Day series, which is coming to Long Branch this summer. There'll be a total of four Neighborhood Fun Days, all at different parks and in different parts of the community throughout the summer. These Fun Days will include water slides, rock-climbing walls, backyard games, ice cream, DJs, and more with each event slightly different than the last. These family events will be free to all residents, and the city greatly appreciates this year's sponsors. I might add, this is costing the city nothing. It's being fully sponsored by Barnabas Health at Monmouth Medical Center, New Jersey Natural Gas, Leon Adakian Engineers, Grace Mamaro and Associates Attorneys at Law, and Raynon Coglan and Mancello, also attorneys at laws. We wanted to create a nostalgic event for our youth here in Long Branch that has a true "Summer in Long Branch" feel. It's important for us to bring each Fun Day to a different part of town so that we reach many different communities. More information about these Fun Days will be out shortly. Also, the City of Long Branch is providing free parking at the municipal lot from the Ocean Place Resort on Ocean Boulevard for Long Branch residents. The municipal lot and adjacent lots can only be used when the lots are open. They're sometimes closed during inclement weather. I won't get into the details, but the bottom line is if you're a city resident, you need to show both your driver's license and the appropriate registration, which, you know, which obviously, the vehicle is registered to the same address at Long Branch. But same Long Branch address. So, only those vehicles that are registered, who leave a dress within the city, will be allowed to park for free. And you'll be asked to show the registration and your license. But other than that, you will be able to park in that lot for free for the duration of the summer, which I guess is from Memorial Day to Labor Day. The full summer concert schedule is now available on our website and social media. We look forward to our concerts, starting on June 9th, which is just around the corner, on Sundays, Tuesdays, and Thursday evenings. Also, I wanted to add that the city, for those beachgoers, the city is now participates with the Vipley app. And basically, if you purchase your season beach badges or daily badges through the Vipley mobile app, you can simply scan in when you arrive at the beach of your choice. Art in the Park is on Sunday at May 26th. That's at the West End Park, where, you know, we've had that for years. That's from 10 to 5 at Brighton Avenue. The event is open to the public with over 50 juried artists. And something new this year, which we haven't had in the past, is that a rain date is scheduled for the next day, if it's rained out. If you remember, I don't know if it was either last year or the year before, it was rained out. So, the rain date is on Monday, the 27th, same time, between 10 and 5. And the last thing I wanted to mention is that we're having another coffee with the mayor on June 25th, from 7 to 8:30 p.m. at the El Bron Firehouse. That's at 173 Lincoln Avenue. This is our third coffee with the mayor this year. And of course, the council is all generally there as well. And they've been well-attended. And as you probably know, on a monthly or bimonthly base, we've been trying to take that to a different neighborhood in the community. So, again, thank you very much for being here tonight, and have a great week.
Thank you. And I also would like to wish everyone, again, a Happy Mother's Day. And as far as the free parking, from what's my understanding, I think we've gotten 15,000 hits?
It's like 18,000.
18,000 hits. So, I'd like to thank the community for the vote of confidence in things that we're doing that are positive. And, you know, we have a great community. And we thank everyone who comes out and speaks out to want to make it a better place to live. And truly appreciate, you know, your concerns, and thank you for coming this evening. I need a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Roll call? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.